We don't usually, we don't usually have to wait. Typically, we have a quorum at the beginning.
No, we can't.
These guys have worked on this for a long time. Our secretary Alex, does he see me or should we take it at home?
He's up there at town regalia.
Oh, he's Johnny Allstam there?
No. Oh, they're gonna bring some little models that are feeling well.
Oh, sorry to hear that. I guess the curtain over the doorway with no stairs wasn't enough to keep people from trying to go in there. It always looks like they're in the midst of something. Seems to me.
Well, it's like the Wizard of Oz behind that curtain.
Yeah.
Should I call somebody?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Chip, do you have phone numbers handy?
They stuck us upstairs, so I might have to get downstairs to get, and see if I could find George.
I might have Jan's phone number. I'll call her while you look for George.
Okay, you try Jan, I'll try George.
I don't know how up to date this is.
This thing under the canvas over here.
Big TV. They came using screen, they put that up. Got your number, isn't it?
Is that mine or his?
I got your number, honey.
You and Bill, you know, the people, I did more calls that are, you know, it's people probing.
I reached Don and he's gonna sign on.
Oh, good.
Yeah, forgotten about it. Jan can't make it.
Okay.
And I think Henry couldn't make it either.
Yeah, I knew Henry couldn't.
Don said it'll be a few minutes.
Oh, the options, one side of the other side of the road, I guess, huh?
Yeah, they were talking that last night.
Have they decided?
I didn't stay for the meeting. I just listened to the Emporium presentation. We just got a Grace's pad up. Not sure who that is.
Samia?
Grace's pad, iPad.
Oh, yeah, Grace Keats. She's, she's, I lived here in Regalia.
Okay.
I only, because she goes to the district.
Oh.
It does a year ago now. Very, very, it's, it's, she, she wanted to go all the way. He doesn't, first of all, he's talking, all those, it might go bad. Are we waiting for Don to come in?
Don says he should be on soon.
Oh, he'll be, he's gonna do it for a moment.
Yeah. All right.
Who is that?
It's Don. Don, you on?
Where? I don't see him.
Uh, he's on, he's in the top right-hand corner that I'm looking at.
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
Hi, Don.
We got a quorum.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, we have a quorum at this point. So I'll call the meeting to order. We only have one agenda item tonight. The menatoma application isn't ready yet. The information isn't, isn't in, and so that one will be scheduled for a future meeting. So it is strictly the Roy application that we're discussing tonight. And just to refresh everyone's memory, this is a continuation of the public hearing that we opened some time ago. And as you'll recall, we had talked about this application. We had requested additional information. The Roy's hired a consultant to put, put the application together and to put forward some information about different locations for the shed, considering conformance to the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. And we've looked at that, and we also held the site visit. A number of us were at the site visit, but not everyone was able to attend. So tonight is a continuation of the public hearing. I don't think that there are any members of the public in attendance that, that want to provide comment. If there are, please speak up. I don't see any, so. We, the planning board will discuss the application and will deliberate, but before we get into that, I wanted to, to ask the Roy's if you had anything additional that you wanted to present or say to the planning board about the application. You know, you don't need to go through the entire thing again. Everyone's had some time with it. I know we've all looked at it. Many of us, as I mentioned, went to the site visit. But if there's anything you'd like to put forward or add at this point, please, please do.
I don't believe we have anything further to say. I think everything's been said already.
Okay, all right. Um, so without any additional public comment, I would look for a motion to close the hearing, first of all.
Go move.
Some motion to close the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, Don seconded. Bill made the motion, Don seconded. I'll call for a vote. Jack?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, so, um, I think we should have some conversation around this. I, I've taken a look, and I know Jack has as well, at the ordinance and looking at the relevant provisions of the ordinance. Just a summary of that, from what I've looked at and what I've reviewed. We have several provisions in the ordinance that theoretically apply to this, to this application and to this situation. Um, the section four of non-conforming structures, four D one, which is reconstruction or replacement, is a provision that, again, in theory, could apply to this, to this situation. And I think the important pieces in that section is that, that no reconstruction or replacement of a structure can increase the non-conformity and that non-conformity definition includes, includes height. It cannot be non-conforming in terms of the height of the structure. That section also requires the demonstration that the, the replacement would meet setbacks to the greatest practical extent, which has been a lot of the conversation that we've had around this. And it also talks about expansion of a structure and refers back to the expansion section in section four, four A four, which talks about no expansion can cause the maximum combined total floor area of structures within a hundred feet to exceed fifteen hundred square feet. So in general terms, those are the provisions that, you know, that I see there that, that have some relevance. Also, um, four A two talks specifically about accessory structures. And it talks about those that are, that they cannot be located closer to the normal high water line than the principal structure. That's, that is prohibited if that structure is being expanded. And in this case, as you'll recall, the original structure that was demolished was eight by eight. This structure is eight by ten, so it is, it is a larger structure than the, than the original. The other provision that I draw your attention to is also in section four H. And that section deals specifically with accessory structures. The rest of the provisions are, are general in nature. Some of the language seems to apply to any, any structure, including accessory structures. But H is specific to accessory structures. And for the most part, this section, as I read it, is looking to, um, probably is applied in, most frequently in situations where someone doesn't have an accessory structure and they're looking to build one, but they cannot do it in a way that conforms to all of the setback requirements. So it's looking at a situation where you're, 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 you're not looking to relocate an existing structure or anything like that. It's, it's the brand new, you know, the new placement of a structure. And in this particular case, I think that this provision has some relevance also. It is specific to accessory structures. It says that they cannot exceed eighty square feet, which the proposed structure does not. It also says that they cannot exceed eight feet in height. And it talks about them, that it's permissible to place them on a legally existing non-conforming lot of record, which this is. It's, I don't remember the exact size. It's something like point three five acres, as I recall. So it is a legally existing non-conforming lot of record. So I do see applicability of this, of this particular section. But again, there is, there is some overlap among the standards in the different sections. This section also talks about placement and conformance to the greatest practical extent. And it also talks about not exceeding eight feet in height. So there is some overlap there. And just to, you know, to get the conversation started and this deliberation started, in my mind, you know, one of the basic questions obviously is whether or not the proposal that's been made meets the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. And as you'll remember from the plans and from the site visit, Mr. Roy had laid out on the ground timbers that indicated where he thought that the rebuilt shed could be relocated and moved back, I think by an additional ten feet or so. What that relocation does do is bring it in line with the principal structure. Because in section four, one of the requirements is that the accessory structure can't be closer to the water than the principal structure. So if we were looking at that location that was identified by the consultants and also by the Roy's as being a possible location, that, that location does meet that requirement. It is not closer to the water than the principal structure is. But the question there is, and we also had some discussion about whether or not the, the, the storage shed could be moved up on top to the parking area. That is not an option that the Roy's were in favor of for a number of reasons, but that seems to be the basic, one of the basic questions before us. You know, what constitutes conformance to the greatest practical extent in this situation? Is it the parking area or is it the lower area that was identified by the Roy's as being the preferable location in their, in their view? One other point about those two particular areas is that, if it was to be relocated to the lower area and not up in the parking area, that eight-foot limitation on height continues to apply. So there is that issue. And, you know, the only remedy, I think, for that would be if, if there was a variance issued, which obviously we don't do. And it would have to be something that the appeals board took a look at. If the shed was relocated to the parking area, it is then outside the hundred-foot setback and there, that restriction on height goes away. So it could remain at ten feet if it was outside of the, the hundred feet. Um, there were a couple of other options that were discussed, but for various reasons, they weren't viable. The Roy's did not believe they were viable. They couldn't move it to one side because the neighbors would object to that. And and underneath the overhang of the deck on the principal structure, that was also problematic for them and didn't accomplish what they believed the storage shed would accomplish for them in terms of protecting equipment and so forth. So in summary, that is, you know, that's my, that's my read of the L U O. And I'd invite all of you to, you know, weigh in on that and talk about those requirements or others from your perspective, if you have a different, a different view of the applicability of some of those.
Paula, this is Chip. Could you tip me a break a little bit? We're just seeing your eyes and your nose. And then also let you know that George has joined us in your, about five minutes ago.
All right. Hi, George.
Hi.
This is Jack. Should I?
Yes, go ahead, Jack.
For me, the, the application was for a ten-by-eight-by-ten-foot-high accessory building on a non-conformate lot. And the section eight that you, the section H that you refer to requires that, you know, puts limits on accessory structures that are on non-conformate lots. And the Roy's meet the eighty-square-feet-in-floor area, but they don't meet the eight-foot, eight-foot limit in height. And that's a dimensional requirement that, as you point out, we can't touch. The appeals board could grant the variance theoretically. So I think that, for me, sort of ends the inquiry because in terms of the placement of it up on the parking area, we haven't really measured that precisely to know whether it would meet the setbacks there. It might, but we're not sure. But I think you're right that if it's outside the hundred-foot zone, then the height issue probably goes away. But it would still need to meet the setbacks, I guess, to the greatest practical.
Well, to the greatest practical extent, yeah.
Which it probably would because there's the slope, the downhill slope that you couldn't put the building on. So theoretically, it could be placed there and no closer to the sideline than it is already. It might meet the road setback, I'm not sure. So unless, you know, but that's not what we have before us. We have the, this structure where the Roy's propose it to be. And I think that the, you know, we can't, we don't have any discretion about the height issue. There's nothing we can do about it. The ordinance says it has to be no greater than eight feet high. It's measured from the lower end. I mean, we have a definition of height. But I think that would even make it higher than it is than the ten feet that the structure is once you measure it from the ground. So I'm not sure if there's anything we can do except deny the application and he can see the variance or appeal.
Uh, uh, others?
Um, yeah, my line of thinking is similar. In fact, I was really looking at that relocation in the lower area, thinking that that was gonna work. And so I wasn't really clued in or hadn't really realized that, that the ten-foot was a problem, but now that I see that it is in, in Article three H, that doesn't really give us any flexibility that I can see.
Yeah. Yeah, the, you know, the, part of the, part of the, the struggle for me was initially, I was, I think we were all looking at, you know, the, the umbrella matter of greatest practical extent and whether or not the, you know, the location in and of itself accomplished that or not. And, you know, I was thinking about the parking area versus the lower area. You know, I think there can be an argument made that the, the parking area is problematic in terms of locating, locating the, the shed. But I think the, you know, the limiting factor at this point does appear to be the, the ten-foot height, which is, you know, it's taller than the, than the original shed was. The shed is, is bigger in terms of floor area and it's also taller. And I think that's the, probably the bottom line issue that we're left with. George or Bill?
So, well, this is George. So what we're, we're saying is then, if I'm following, the shed would be fine in the proposed location if it was eight feet tall and not ten feet tall.
Well, we, we, you know, we'd not drawn that conclusion as a board yet. I mean, it was, we would have to, as a board, we would have to agree that that location is this, is the location that meets the setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. So that's one piece of this equation. And then we also bump into the, the ten-foot limitation. So I think the discussion we're having right now is that, you know, regardless of, you know, even if we did say that the location was acceptable, we still have the ten-foot issue to deal with. But we would have to make a decision on, you know, on both of those pieces. If we were going to move forward with it.
One other thing that I, I noticed when I was looking at this before is in the application, in the part on non-conforming structures in the application, we asked for the total floor area of all portions of the structures, which would be the shed and the house that was within the hundred-foot line, and we didn't get that. So I don't, I don't know whether the overall floor area limit of fifteen hundred square feet is met. I, I think it is.
I think that. If I can interject here, it was stated in the last meeting that we had as a planning board that the total square footage of the house and the eighty foot, eighty-square-foot shed is a total of six hundred and forty square feet.
Within, within the hundred-foot.
Within, within a hundred feet of the high water line.
Okay, I don't remember that, but I'll take you up for it.
And so it, you know, as, as we've been discussing, the, you know, the ten, the ten-foot limitation really is not something that the planning board is able to deviate from. That, that's strictly, you know, it would be a variance issue. I have no idea how the appeals board would view that. But we, we don't have the flexibility to approve a building that exceeds that height limitation as put forward in the ordinance. Planning board members, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts about the, you know, the overall question of conformance to the greatest practical extent about the locations in general. It would be a somewhat different, different decision for us to say that we did not agree that that location met setbacks to the greatest practical extent and it exceeded the ten-foot height. That's different than saying that we, we did find it to be in conformance to the greatest practical extent, but there is the problem of the height. You know, they're, they, they both limit, you know, approval of, of the structure, but I think it's a, it's a somewhat different decision depending on, on where we go with that. So I don't know if you have additional thoughts about that question.
Well, I would be willing to reach at the conclusion, I would reach a conclusion that the moving it back in the lower area would meet the location to the greatest practical extent. So it's, it would be just the height that was the problem for me.
Okay. Others, do you have an opinion on that?
I would agree with Don. As far as the location not being a problem. And then the height, we can't, obviously, like you said, Paula, we can't approve that. If, if there was no way to get it approved or a variance issue, then I would, if the height has to be reduced, then it has to be reduced. But I would approve the location, in my opinion.
I think, I think I'm okay with the proposed location. But I. Um, but I. But I think it's kind of a moot point right now until the height issue is addressed.
Yeah. You know, one, one of my thoughts and the reason I'm putting it out there is that, you know, if this did go to the appeals board, they might have a different. Depending on how the planning board. Viewed the locations, um, they might have a different perspective on. The height, the height question.
What are your feelings about the location?
Mine? I'm, um, you know, I, like I said before, I, I kind of struggled with it, but ultimately. Um, I. I felt that the. The upper location had some real issues in terms of. Of, uh, practicality and, uh, and the utility of the building that the, the, uh, the Roy's were putting forward and. You know, I, I did struggle with it because I think it's, um, I think it's. It's doable, I think it's something that, uh, that could be achieved. But, um. In thinking about some of the limitations that we've considered with other, other properties. Ultimately, I decided that the, the lower location was, um. And given the options and given the circumstances, I felt it was a reasonable location.
So we would deny the application. And the Roy's could decide either to appeal our decision or to seek a variance or, or to, or to get a new building.
And I, you know, I think, um. Um, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't, um, I, I don't know that it would be appropriate for us to. You know, we can't approve the location of the structure because we do have that limitation. But I think that, you know. Um, I think it's a different matter for the record to reflect that we had this conversation and what everyone thought about that lower location versus the parking area. And if the height issue was resolved. Um, I guess I would suggest that, um, that then we would come back. And make a decision on the, you know, on the application. Broadly, um, you know, all aspects of it, um.
Right.
Uh, when, you know, when and if the height limitation is addressed.
I mean, they could come back with a new application for a new building that was under the height. Limit and height is measured differently than the height of the building, but. They'd have to be careful about that. You may have options.
Do I have a couple of questions?
Yes, please go ahead, Dan.
If, uh, two, two questions, if the, um, height. Was, the height issue was rectified. So, so that the. The, the, the building was less than was, was eight feet. Would I, I would have to go through this entire process again?
Um. I, I, I think that, um. Others, please put your thoughts forward if you have them, but my immediate reaction is that. It. Procedurally, um, it would make sense to me that we figured out a way to proceed. With it being a. Uh, a revision, uh, to the application that you've provided.
So it wouldn't take another seven months to. To get through it?
No, I assume it would not, um, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't the process, um. Um, alone that caused. Seven months to go by, but that's, you know, that's a different, that's a different.
We, we could theoretically table.
Yeah.
And he, he could seek a variance from the Board of Appeals, he, he wouldn't be able to appeal our decision, he'd have to. He'd, he'd have to seek a variance would be his only route. If the variance was granted, then we could move forward with his existing application. Or if the variance wasn't granted and he decided to somehow alter the height of the building.
Or, or, uh, he could just, um. Alter the height of the building and not go to the appeals board, I mean, that's another option.
Right.
And, yeah, if we did that, if we, if we tabled it, if we were all in agreement that it made sense to table it. Um, then you could just come back and revise a pending application because it would still be pending.
Okay, and the, how does the appeals process work? For a variance?
Well, um, there is, um. Appeals are. Uh, they're an exception, um, they're not, they're not something, uh, that is automatically granted, um. They are an exception to the rules and there is language around. Uh, the standards that the appeals board would apply. And there's a separate, um, appeals board ordinance online and there were a number of standards there. Um, they're not, they're not easy standards to overcome because appeals. Um, you know, from, from requirements are. Issued quite conservative, conservatively, and they're considered conservatively. So, um, you know, I think my best advice to you would be to take a look at that, it's not, it's not very lengthy, uh, the piece that talks about. The standard that you would need to, um, to conform to. Um, but, you know, be, be aware that, uh, they're not routinely issued and, um. They are issued conservatively in general terms.
Paula, would, would the appeals board even have jurisdiction to act if we've only tabled the application?
Well, he wouldn't be appealing, he wouldn't be appealing the decision, he would, well, um.
Wouldn't be. He'd be seeking a variance, which is a separate patient to the board of, the board of appeals has two forms. One is an appeal from our decision. And one is a application for a variance, so he would be seeking in a variance. So I think they could hear that, they couldn't do an appeal because we, if we're tabling our decision.
You know, they might be. I, I, I would assume they're going to be interested in that, you know, the, the circumstances, you know, the scenario and they would want to. Talk about the situation more broadly, but they wouldn't be reacting to a decision. So, Dan, did you have any other questions you wanted to ask?
No, I think those were, those were my only two questions, uh, um. Obviously, I would probably initially try the appeal. Um, or to, for a variance to accept the, the ten foot height, but. Um, if, um, that is not able to be obtained, I. Um, would consider, um, modifying the roof line. Um, of the shed that I have. Um, so that it, it falls. Within the eight foot mark.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right. Um, and, you know, I, I should mention to you that, you know, the appeals board, uh, you know, they set their own, they set their own schedule and I. Have, you know, no idea, um, they don't have. Regular meetings like the planning board does, they don't meet, you know, even every month, they meet on an as needed basis. And so I can't give you any indication about what the timeframe would be for that. Um, and, um, also, um, you would specifically be applying for a variance. And so don't look at the piece in the ordinance concerning appeals because it's not an appeal. Uh, it's the issuance of a variance.
Okay, thank you, Paula.
Uh, planning board, others, any comments, questions?
We be tabling it for a specific amount of time or?
I, I think that would be, I think that would be hard to do because, you know. He plans to go to the appeals board, I don't think we have any sense for, you know, what that looks like, um. You know.
That, that's fine, if the variance is denied and you decide to go ahead with changing the height. You should look at the definition in our ordinance about height of a structure and how it's measured. Because that's on a slope there, so it's measured differently than you might think.
Paula, if I may?
Chip.
Two things, um, I'd ask the board to set some kind of time limitation on this. Uh, broad as you want, but some kind of limitation. And the other thing would be is that the app can also know that he has to put in a building permit. If he's gonna take that route.
What route?
Altering the structure.
Yeah, but it would come to the planning board first, um. Because we would need to issue some, I mean, under any scenario, um. Um, a building permit would be, would be required, um. You know, if the building is moved or the building is altered in some way, um. So I, I think it's a given that there would need to be a, a building.
So if a variance is granted, it would come back to the planning board to issue a final decision. And if the variance is not granted. And he's gonna change the height, we still have to amend his application for a revised height. And. Discuss it further.
Right, so under that scenario, um, the Roy's would come back with, um. An amended application, an amendment to their application. That addresses the height issue and then the board would reconsider it and would have to issue a decision on the whole. The whole project, we'd have to make findings on the. Uh, location to the greatest practical extent and the height and, you know, the other standards that are in the ordinance. So any, anything further, Jack, have you got anything else?
No, no, I'm fine.
Uh, anyone else? Dawn, George, Bill?
Nothing for me.
Okay, um. Um, if there is nothing further, then I would call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to table the pending application. So that the Roy's can pursue a variance or. An amended application to us for a change of height.
I'll talk to him. Yeah, George.
George seconds? Discussion? Okay, and just one, one point, um, um, before we take a vote on that, um, for you, Chip, you had mentioned, um, you had mentioned a timeframe. And I, you know, I think that, I think it would be difficult to do that and base it on anything real. Obviously, none of us, um, want it to, you know, to go on any, any longer than is necessary. Um, if it appeared that for some reason it was extending out beyond an appropriate timeframe. Uh, the planning board, you know, still has control of the application. We could move it off the table and take some other action with it if that appeared to be appropriate for any reason. So I think that would be my suggestion, instead of trying to impose an artificial time limit at this point. That we really don't have anything to base on. So we have a motion and a second, um. Um, no discussion, I'll call for a vote, uh, Jack?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, um, uh, thank you, um, uh, Dan and Connie, uh, for joining us today and if you do have any questions. As you're moving forward, um, you can. Um, uh, reach out to Chip or to, um, um, to Jack or I as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Good night. Um, we have, the only other thing we have are. Minutes, um. I don't know if. Did anyone have a chance to look at minutes and do you have comments on those, um? I do have a few, a few suggested edits, but I did not, uh, get them out electronically to everybody before the meeting. Do others have edits to those minutes or have you had a chance to look at them? Um, we can, we can carry them over again if, if you want time to look at them.
I didn't look at them.
Okay. All right, um. Like I said, I do have some edits, but I can, um. Now, it's probably better if. We put those. Send them out electronically to everybody so you can look at them before the next meeting before we vote on them, so why don't we just do that? Uh, there were two sets, there was, I'm not sure how it happened, but there was a, a set that, that got overlooked, um. From February twenty eighth, I believe, and then the last meeting, uh, April twenty fifth. So. Okay, um. Any? Anything else, any other issues, anyone, before we conclude?
Oh, I just want to mention that I'll not be at the next meeting, I will, I'll be away.
Okay, all right, so that's two of you, so maybe three, but we may have to rethink the next meeting.
Dan has to recuse herself from Manitoba.
Yep, so that's three out already and so, yeah, we'll have to talk about that, Chip, and figure out what to do. Um, do you, are they going to have their, their material ready? Uh, do you know when they're, when they're going to be done with that?
Believe it will be, believe it is, but it's too late, not getting in by Friday, so.
Um. Well, I mean, fortunately on that one, there's no, you know. Obviously, we don't want it to languish, but there's not, you know, some kind of a. Construction schedule or anything that, uh, we're bumping up against yet, so.
Are any other pending applications? Chip?
Um, there's one being put together still. Uh, for a new storage shed in a commercial overlay district. Uh, but that hasn't been submitted yet. That's about the only one I know of at present.
That's good.
Okay, uh, just one other thing that occurs to me, um. Um, the L U O changes, um, obviously are completed, those have been submitted. Um, they are in, I forget the number, but they're in a warrant article and, um. So. Don't forget to vote thumbs up on those and, um. The, uh, the comp plan is, um, and there is actually next Wednesday, there is a public meeting. Where the, uh, the comp plan is going to be, um, the final draft is going to be presented, so it's a public meeting. And different members of the comprehensive plan committee are going to be doing just, uh, summary presentations on different sections of the comp plan. And, um, I'll be doing, um, the land use piece of that. So if that's of interest to you, it's next Wednesday at six o'clock. And that also is a separate warrant article, um, on the ballot. Anybody else, anything? If not, uh, thank you all. Um, and, uh, Chip and I will figure out the date of the next meeting and, um, uh. We'll put something out, so you'll all know, I, I suspect we may have to. Rearrange the date because like I said, we're down three already and there may be more, so. We'll figure it out and get back to you.
Thanks.
Thanks. We're adjourned, good night.
Good night.
Night.